I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting on April 9, 2021. Molly, has the meeting been posted? The agenda made available to the public in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. And as required by law, the current family of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall at the entrance door to the meeting room and is also posted on the district website. Molly, will you please take off?
Yes, Ms. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Yale.
Yes.
Ms. Carter. Yes, Ms. Prentzer.
Yes.
Dr. Van Gelder.
Yes.
And for the record, I would like to confirm that Ms. Morrisette is not able to be here and verify that she has an excused absence for this meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve this absence.
So move.
You have a motion and second? Is there any discussion? Molly, will you please go on?
Yes, Mr. Yale.
Yes.
Ms. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Prentzer.
Yes.
Dr. Van Gelder.
Yes.
Ms. Blakely.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the President's meeting. Before we move into the rest of the agenda, I just want to take a minute to thank all of you for coming here. I know this is a little bit different than where we usually have the meetings. And we did this intentionally so that you can come here. We tried it last semester and of course it didn't work because we were in yellow mode and so the timing was off. But thank you for coming. We normally have nameplates out front, which we forgot for today. So we would just introduce ourselves briefly. My name is Krista Barnes and I am the Board President.
Good morning, I'm Doug Prentzer and the Vice President for sure.
Hi, I'm Megan Van Gelder. I'm the Treasurer this year.
Adam Yale, I'm the Director this year.
I'm Dana Blakely, I'm the Secretary for sure.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on with our agenda. The next item is approval of minutes from the Board of Education meeting held on March 15, 2021.
I would request a motion for approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on March 15, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Do you have a motion and second? Molly, will you please go on?
Yes, Ms. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Prentzer.
Yes.
Dr. Van Gelder.
Yes.
Ms. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Yale.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is public comment. This is a time for members of the community to express opinions and share ideas with the Board about matters pertaining to Westside Community Schools. As a reminder, public comment time is not a question and answer session with the Board and to comply with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, it is not a time for the Board to engage in discussion or debate. Is there anyone who wishes to request public comment? And if so, please raise your hand and Molly will request, or I'm sorry, will collect your request card. Okay, seeing none. Next on the agenda, we have public comment regarding American Civics curriculum. This is one of the requirements under statute that we have. We discuss American Civics at a board meeting where we have public comment. It's not necessarily specific to American Civics, but we wanted to put it on the agenda to make clear that we were meeting on such a term requirement. So same rules will apply and I will go through those if there is anyone who would like to comment on the American Civics curriculum. Seeing none, we move on. To new business. First up is the Committee on American Civics. This is Dr. Weichel, are you kind of?
Yeah, just briefly, just to share some information about why you're all here today, actually, just part of what Chris was talking about there a minute ago, the Nebraska Statute 79-724 outlining requirements for school districts to have a committee on American Civics and duties related to that committee. And again, that's, I don't know how we blow that up, about why we're here today. And just really quickly, my name is Mark Weichel. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching in the Right here in the District. So just great to see all of the students, the government students and all the teachers and just a great way for us to kind of bring a board meeting to you. And really, it's because of this statute. And just so that you know, when we talk about a statute, I mean that the law has been passed or state legislature. And when that happens, it goes through our State Board of Education and when the State Board of Education takes a look at that requirement and that statute and it gets into the set of rules that we follow. A lot of times in teaching, learning and the curriculum work that we do at the district office, it's called Rule 10. And so when it makes it into Rule 10, those are the things that we follow and it's kind of our guidelines that we follow as a district. And so one of the requirements that's in Rule 10 because of this statute is that we annually meet as a school board and we have three members that serve on the Committee of American Civics. And so for this year, Adam Yale, who introduced himself earlier and Beth Morrisette, who's not here today, and then Dana Blakely serve on that committee. So that group of people gets together periodically through the year. This year, we met on November 13th where we had a quick meeting to kind of talk about what the committee would be looking at over the course of the year. And then we also had a chance to kind of stop in and watch the mock election that day. Usually for the first meeting of the year, we schedule it around the mock election because we think that that is such a great example, kind of culminating activity of all the great things that you do with your K-12 experience around American Civics. So we come and check that out. On December 4th this year, we came to a school board meeting and just review really from a K-12 perspective, what American Civics looks like throughout the curriculum cycle when you go from kindergarten all the way through your senior year. And then today, it's our opportunity to have a conversation with all of you and also have an opportunity formally for public comment around American Civics. So if anybody has any information that they want to share in that way. Another piece to the statute is that we must examine the curriculum to ensure that we have standards that are aligned to the state standards with Nebraska. So at that November meeting, we always review what we do in K-12. It's just interesting maybe to know as students, when you sit down to take a test or when you're learning new curriculum or when your teachers are up lecturing, all of the different things that you're doing are really as a result of state standards that have been developed. And then teachers work together to create curriculum maps and really a plan about how they're going to teach that to all of you. And so we like to share those things and it's just really an articulated plan, K-12, when we do that piece. And then really the reason that you are here today is another piece of that statute. They give us three choices of things that we have to do for students. So number one is you can take a U.S. citizenship test in eighth and 12th grades. And I think I know Mr. Price over here, I know that I think you take that test anyway, but that's not what we're using to meet the requirements of this. We could kind of do it as an activity. Another thing that we could do is attend a public meeting. Or a third thing would be to complete a project or a paper around this kind of a topic. So we have chosen as a district that we do the public meeting. And so this is the first year that we've decided twice a year that we're going to bring the meeting to you so that you don't have to go out and try to do it in the evening or figure out transportation and those kinds of things. So we're excited to bring this meeting to you and to kind of meet that requirement as well. Another thing that I would just share with you that's also in the statute is we have at different grade levels, K through six, that we need to vote, to vote at least an hour a week to teaching things like noteworthy events in American history and just all of those things, historical backgrounds, that you might think of the American Revolution and all those things that you're doing in government that follow right into the statute. And then another piece of the statute, the last one that I might highlight to this is you have to have two courses in every high school that really hits on things that we really hit in our early modern AP in U.S. history. And then I said that government class in 11th and 12th grade. So it's a great committee. It's not something that takes up a whole lot of time, but it's just really good for us to make sure that we're paying attention to those things so that it never falls off and that we can ensure that that's the type of thing that's being followed in curriculum, both in Westside and also throughout the state. So that's kind of an overview of that statute. Does anyone have any questions? And I'll open it up. I feel like today's presentation is almost for the students as much as it is for the Board, as they know this, as we talk about this. But so is there any questions at all from any board members or any of the students that are here today? Great. Well, thank you.
Dr. Weichel, Adam Yale. Maybe you also want to talk about the curriculum audit that the district is going to undertake and sort of a kind of a social implication to what we're doing as well.
Great idea, great, great suggestion there. Mr. Yale, yes. I'm sure that many of you have heard about Wee Side. You know, that's something that we've been really proud of in our district and it's really our approach to diversity, equity and inclusion. And we've done a lot of really neat things with that committee over the course of the year, but we really want to do more, you know, in light of COVID and those kinds of things. And so we've got a lot of great things planned for next year, working with a nationally known author named John Crown Apple, working with ADL, the Anti-Defamation League. So we're really excited about the work we're doing in those areas. And another thing that we wanted to make sure that we looked at and were very deliberate and intentional about would be what does diversity, equity and inclusion look like throughout our curriculum, K-12, in all subject areas and throughout the district? And so we've got a group that's coming in that we've spent a lot of time making sure that they're going to deliver exactly what we want them to, but to really come in and do a curriculum audit. It's going to be May 18th, 19th and 20th. So we'll have a few substitute teachers out across the district that are going to be working with us those days. But again, it's going to be curriculum leaders throughout the district at the elementary, middle and high school levels. And ultimately, we'll develop a kind of a plan at the end of that that's going to really show us like what we're really good at, some areas that we can improve and what some action steps might be for us as we move forward. So, you know, for example, they might say, oh, you really should think about adding this into, you know, maybe your government class. Or they might even say, oh, this might be a really good opportunity for an extra class that you might offer in the social studies department or any of those kinds of suggestions at my company. So we're really excited about seeing what comes from that. So thanks to Adam for bringing that up.
Thank you.
And Adam has been a big role in that Wee Side Committee too. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Weichel.
Good.
Next up is the Westside Community Center. Jen Fox.
Hi, my name is Jen Fox. I am the Facilities Coordinator in the District.
Do you want to use the mic? I have it on that. It's on Facebook.
See if I can get this speaker. Okay, great. Anyway, I'm a Facilities Coordinator in the District, so I wear many hats, but one of the main things I do is if you are from the community and you'd like to use our facilities, like our afterias, our gyms, our auditoriums, all that comes through. So we have rental rates that we charge. In addition to if you have a majority of Westside students and residents, there is an opportunity to use our facilities for free. But today, I'm here to talk to you about our building on 108th and Grover. It's been the swing school for about six years during our Phase One of facilities redesign. And right now, we're in a pause before we hopefully can begin Phase Two. And so for the next few years, we are going to return the building to a community center or community use. So I've got a couple of slides up here about how the building will be formulated. Many of you may have been there before on 108th and Grover. A lot of people, I mean, the facility was open as a community center from 1987 until 2016. And so many, many people were there. So many people would come to me and say, I came here for the laws class or I came here for driver's education. So it's a really great space for all of the community, not just Westside. But the floor plan of the building will be about the same as before. We'll use the cafeteria, the gym. So this is the north side of the building, the cafeteria and the gym. The next pod over is a double classroom and two just individual classrooms. And then the next pod over is the main entrance and that will be some just staff space. Below that are kind of some of the room setup details. So people, this is also, sorry, I should mention, what our web presence will look like. So if you're looking to book a meeting or an event, you can go to our website and see how we can set up the rooms for public meetings. So we have our current rental rates, which are on the board regulations, board policy regulations. I am going to recommend that we raise those rental rates based on some research of similar community centers in the Omaha area. And then at this point, we will not, in the past, we offered full service catering. We had groups that came in and would do breakfast and lunch. We will not be doing that at this time right now. It will just be coffee service or, you know, Jimmy John's, that kind of thing. So does anyone have any questions? Not a good question.
In that building, so we're just talking about the first floor as being the first place.
Correct. The lower level will still be the west campus.
Yeah, and that space is fully occupied.
Yep.
All square viewed, that's all right.
And that space is still secure, separately secured?
Correct.
Except separate entrances and?
And there's custodial staff that will be scheduled at the building whenever there's a meeting in progress. Right now, we're doing a slow open. We don't even have any signage up yet and I wanted to make sure we have this presentation to the Board first. But so it'll be slow until, you know, also COVID really does limit the number of people who want to have in-person meetings.
Is there spaces of the COVID-related or the financial?
So what happened with access 66 catering is it became, we do local or we do government approved meals to community centers throughout the, throughout the city. So like North Star, Boys and Girls Club, the Crop Center, and those are all, we call it school food, you know? C A C F P is the Child Nutrition Act. And so, you know, it's different, whole grain bread. So we don't have the supplies to do daily or day catering. If we have daily meetings with 200 people, yes. So it's a split. We can provide catering if it would be beneficial, but right now, we just don't have the supplies on hand. Things would kind of just go bad.
Okay, any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
As Jen's sitting down, I just want to thank her for all of her work. I think she works at her ABC building and a lot of people, she really flies under the radar, but she handles a lot of things from youth volleyball practices throughout the district, coordinating, work on baseball fields throughout the district. She was instrumental at the baseball field at Sunset Hills, really getting a nice way to go where it's being available for our community. So Jen, you do a great job. I just want to thank you for all your behind the scenes work and the connections that you have all throughout our community. So thank you.
Okay, next up is the Anti-Bullying Report hearing review. And Robert Miranda.
Change your microphone.
Good morning, students and Board of Education. So today, we're just going to give an update on the Anti-Bullying Report for the Annual Report. So we can go and start. The bullying part is a three-headed monster, I think, and we will get it through the eyes of the length of curriculum learning. What do we need to give kids so they're aware of bullying? And then we also talk about with our special services department and they help out. And then I am the Director of Social Services, so we definitely need to have that department involved when we talk about bullying. So we talked about bullying. Bullying is an ongoing pattern of physical, verbal, and now the last, what, six years, it seems to trend, is shifting towards more electronic abuse. And that, that social media is something that we are, every year, we're looking at what we can do to support students and how we can, how you as a student can use it appropriately. What does that mean? So continue having that discussion. But we have, it's a spectrum. It's a spectrum of peer conflict, harassment and bullying. Harassment is how does a person, how does that actually makes a person feel? And then there's an imbalance of power when it's harassment. Peer conflict, an example of peer conflict would be a misunderstanding. And sometimes when we're in classrooms, we have a student or a group of kids at lab, we think they're talking about us and that conflict starts because we think that they're talking about us, whatever it may be. Another example of peer conflict and how it starts and how it snowballs is, I go back to my high school days or even in elementary, but when a teacher asks a student, please be quiet, and then a friend says, yeah, be quiet, and then everybody starts chuckling and right there, we don't know how that person, when the teacher called up for us to be quiet, we might have a bad day. Then everybody laughs, so then there's a conflict that's happening. So we've got to be really careful. Again, that bullying is ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. So making sure we define those. So the first thing is be proactive. We've got to be proactive and how do we prevent bullying? Something that I would put up there, I really think it starts with the Board of Education and their belief about bullying. It starts with the superintendent and it trickles down into your schools. And the first line of defense is our principals in our school. Our principals have to create a culture of acceptance of all people. I'm short and bald and chubby, but I have a story and my story is important and we need to make sure that we listen to everybody's story. Okay? We cannot have implicit bias. And what I talk about that is when you see me, and I have this bias last name, the implicit bias is that my parents are from Mexico. I love soccer. It's contrary, my parents aren't from Mexico, my grandparents aren't from Mexico. I'm fifth generation person from our little town. My favorite sport is collegiate wrestling. It's not soccer. So those implicit biases, we've got to be careful. And then once you keep, once your principal sets this culture, we hope that the first line of defense are going to be our counselors, but more important, it's going to be our staff members, our teachers. And hopefully, our teachers are practicing and listening to what's going around them. Now, sometimes it's difficult as a teacher because you're doing this and we don't see what's happening. And I've got nothing excuses, but it's hard. We don't have eyes in our head, but sometimes a lot of my teachers, they can see that. But addressing that, our teachers are our first line. Our, all our staff members are first lines. Your security, hall monitors, how do we attack that passive instruction, small groups, circle of friends, our social emotional curriculum? Second step is happening in our K through six buildings in our middle school. There's a lot of things happening when you're freshmen, it's a freshman seminar here, I'm talking about that. Our classroom reading sparks in the elementary level. And then we have something that's called PBIS. It's initiative for the, for the entire state through the Department of Education here. But when we talk about PBIS, PBIS has a sub, a sub called Restorative Practices. And when we think about this, a lot of people think that we should go from here to suspension to expounding kids and so forth. What PBIS states is that, yes, we can give, we can go from there and there and give that. But what happens a lot of times is we don't empower kids to change that behavior and we don't empower them and give them what they need to change that behavior. Now again, if that behavior doesn't change, then we got those, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three supports, and then we start looking at expulsion, suspensions and so forth. No place for hate, I think some of them may have participated in that and that's locked in a program of acceptance of different culture. And then they go through a series of workshops with you and then we get a banner at the end of the year. When we talk about this special program, it's things that we're more intentional about so we can kind of highlight what's happening, like autism or whatever it may be, you know, we've got kindness, we've got special siblings of people that may have impacted bullying. We have be kind campaign that's been happening for a couple of years. And then the last bully group, we heard everybody mention, the Wee Side Committee. And I think the Wee Side Committee is going to, is going to help us take us to the next level of acceptance. Not just that, but I think it's important to know that the Wee Side Committee is going to put a challenge on our teachers so they can understand where you guys are coming from. Because I think sometimes we can stop that when our teachers know where we're coming from and vice versa. You all need to understand where our teachers are coming from as well. So Wee Side, I think Dr. Lucas sends out administrative teachers, I think it's called payday Friday or payday month or whatever, and he sends a lot of those snippets about, hey, we're having this celebration with some of our different cultural backgrounds and so forth. Or this is a way to look at things differently, implicit bias, whatever it may be. So our teachers are going to be held accountable to that as well for Wee Side. And then just continuing at the prevention, it's being proactive, training our staff and giving our staff the tools that they need, looking at trauma and form practices if needed. How do we utilize some of our service, great services here in Omaha, using voice town skills? And I talk back, I want to reiterate that implicit bias awareness. We have to be really critical about that. And then just specific training for our counselors, our administrators, social worker, Board of Education members, so we are all on the same page. We have to be on the same page about this. So when we talk about preventing... Is there someone?
No.
So we talk about reporting. So I go back to a principle, I'm a former principal, so as a principal, my job was to make this the best culture of acceptance of everybody to belong on. And when you do that, what happens is you create a culture that when something isn't right, you see something, you report it without hesitation, without any guilt. You see something, you say something and you hold yourself accountable for that. That's our job. And if our job as a school district, as a school, as a principal, he needed to call me so we can have them correct that. What happens now is we have to have a plan at the school. Our plan should be what? We need to identify some adults in the building where if you're having an issue or you want to report something, that happens without any checks, my sir. If you're going to be looked at or whatever, this has to be feel good for you to just say, this is happening, we can't have this. Whole dozen panels of adults. Then after that, sometimes we look at this and we go back to the first, to the first slide about peer conflict, harassment and bullying. So what we do is we try to have some peer conflict before it gets escalated. Have a conversation. Nine times out of 10, it's miscommunication and we have two entities that are having arguments or whatever, but it's a lot of people in the middle that are stirring up the pot. They've never said anything. Okay? So continue to have that. There's a non-alien consent concern for to the district that I receive from time to time from people, from students or from community members saying that they've observed, they heard, and then I investigate immediately. And that will straight to myself or Brandy and we take care of that issue and start investigating and making sure that students are okay. And the last one, we have the safety hub hotline. That's an anonymous, both of these are anonymous and we make sure that we follow through. If someone from the safety hub hotline will call us and say, this student is struggling in this because he's getting harassed or bullied, and then we investigate and I call the administrator, we have a plan that night. And then we, I get calls sometimes at 2:00 in the morning and we are able to help out our students who are struggling for whatever reason. So, once it's reported, how do we respond? This is critical. I cannot help you, we cannot help you, we cannot support you if it's not reported. So you have to, we have to do a better job of reporting, but we have to do a better job of making this a cultural acceptance place. We are all different. So when we do this here, there's an investigation that happens immediately. Once that investigation goes, we start investigating everybody involved. So it becomes a web. So first, it starts off with two people. Those two people have three friends, those three friends have five friends. Sometimes it takes two, three days to investigate this. There's a lot of pieces in there. We look at what we interviewed, we assess, and then again, we look at those outcomes. Does that, does that student need more reteaching? Do we need more restorative practices or do we need to get in our SRO? And I wonder, I'm not using the SRO in a negative way, I think a lot of people use that, but I think our SRO is doing the things before and that preventative as well. That's what our SRO is here for, not for the purity stuff, but we tend to bring it also in these conversations at every point. So making sure that our SRO is being there in a proactive measure instead of giving a kid a ticket or whatever it may be. And then after we assess, we do a safety plan of meeting and then here's something that we do, we need to do a better job in. And I cut myself in there and I try to call kids when students call me and I work with students about their film singled out by a teacher or if it was singled out by another classmate, I try to follow up with students. I don't do this, maybe not as often or quick as I should, but I get back with them. I just met with some students on Wednesday or Tuesday and I'll be following up with them within the next two weeks, but I got their message prior to spring break and there was a gap, I did call the parents and so forth and had a conversation. So that follow-up is key when you talk about bullying, making sure the person feels okay still, they're thinking straight, they're ready to move forward. And then the last one is the continued focus. We're not going to let this go by the Westside. We're going to continue to track data. We're going to look at data for the next couple of years and seeing how many reports reports we have of harassment, peer conflict and bullying and see if those are tied with each other. Um, also just looking at our SE, our social emotional, uh, learning curriculum and making sure what we need to adapt and what we need to make, uh, still a bit better. We always have areas to grow and if something's not working, we can change it up a little bit. But if somebody, something's working, we continue to build up that. Looking at kids, uh, and just a lot of us have some trauma that we're gathered with that we were never given the tools to change that behavior. And continue to look at PBIS and then just focusing on the whole child. You guys are important to us, uh, you guys are the future. We need to make sure that we are giving you what you need to be successful. And the last part is, I think anytime a situation happens, whatever it may be that involves any of our departments, whether it's curriculum, whether it's student services, whether it's special services, we always take time, maybe the next day or maybe two days later, and we reflect and we take this personal and we make sure that we have a checkpoint and say, did we do everything correctly, how does that look, how can we change it? So the last point of this is reflection and we have to always reflect. And if that's my little template for today, please make sure to reflect. Reflect on what's happening, reflect when you're having a great day, what did that look like? And then sometimes we have bad days, I'm human, I have bad days. And when I was young, my bad days started on because I woke up late and my mom was on me. And then I'd do breakfast, I'd get grumpy and the first thing a principal who saw me is they'd take off her hat and then, so we have to do a better job together. So, uh, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Aranda. You know, the hard part about this and I think the part that the board tries to shape, uh, is it is hard to speak up. It takes courage for students or teachers or staff members or administration to speak up and have these difficult conversations. So, you know, the board is trying to think of ways to, uh, foster a culture of hand. Because typically, we all know that something is wrong. It's a matter of how do you confront it, how do you go solve the problem? How do you go have those discussions, which is a difficult discussion. Uh, I guess that's what sticks in our minds, we try to figure some of those out.
I was gonna ask, do you feel like Westside has given appropriate tools and frameworks and resources to address, are there any needs the board needs to be aware of?
No, I, I think what happens is, we have to understand that when people address or talk about bullying, there's a natural process and sometimes we want a quick answer and a quick turnaround so it, it's working, like we have magic dust and boom, it never gonna happen. It's gonna take a while, we're all human. And once we find what's happening and we can get to the root cause, then we can start giving that support. So I think, I think it's just, I think we're doing a better job as a district in my, my second year here of, um, holding our administration to start having more uh, peer conflict resolution, which, which I've really stressed of having those individuals come talk to each other. And even if it's a teacher and a student, that making sure that somewhere we know that relationship was broken, but how do we fix it? And having that conversation between a student and a teacher, and I've been involved in some. And it's challenging because, you know, sometimes it's as, as an adult, you know, with my own kids, I gotta say, I'm sorry, I screwed up. And that's hard, that's hard to say. And I don't care who you are, it's hard to say, I'm sorry, I screwed up. Let's move forward, but this is how we're gonna move forward. And I think it's hard for a kid to say that. And I think it's probably twice as hard for adults to say that. So always trying to do to work and get better.
Robert, that's a great point, in terms of the conflict resolution. I was just thinking, you know, a school of eighteen hundred people, uh, people being people, um, no one's gonna get along with everybody, you know, you're gonna have disagreements with fellow students and... But that doesn't stop at high school and as you go through life, um, whether it's higher education or work and those things don't go away. So, um, the better you can manage conflict, um, and the sooner you address it, um, it's, it's been a surgery, well, not just while you're in high school, but adulthood.
And actually, we stress that peer conflict resolution is when you go to the workforce, you may not agree with your coworker, but you gotta get along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To that point, I, I wanna just take a pause here and I know that you all have these sheets that you need to fill out. And one of the questions is, what are, were two points of contention that were discussed and did they come to any resolution? And you'll see today, there probably won't be any points of contention to discuss. This is a pretty vanilla agenda, um, nothing really contentious on here. But I do wanna just take a moment and talk about, um, that doesn't mean that we always agree. And I think to Mr. Aranda's point, as adults, we have to find ways to resolve those conflicts. We generally don't do that at the board meeting because we don't have time. So we will find ways outside of the meeting to pick up the phone and call each other or meet for coffee and say, this is my position on something, or I disagree with Dr. Lucas or I disagree with Ms. Blakely or anybody. And how do I resolve that? How do I listen to what the other person is saying? How do I take what they're saying, process it, analyze it, figure out if anything there that I agree with and find some way to resolve that conflict? And as adults, we're doing that all the time. So it's not just something that you have to deal with the bullying or the school. This is a skill that you need to learn that will serve you well your whole life. And so you won't see points of contention probably here today, but, um, we are constantly working behind the scenes to normalize something. And I just wanted you to be aware of that, when you don't see the points of contention today, it doesn't mean that we always agree and that there's nothing contentious going on at the board level. Um, I don't know if any of you have...
Could I add something? Um, I would just say, the public meeting, if we're after requirements by law, we're thinking in public and to make these votes in public and to discuss issues in public. We had to check today to see if we had a quorum, which is we need four people here to make any kind of decisions. And if there's only three, you can't move forward and make those decisions. Now, when I started on the board, um, I was told by a longstanding board member at the time, like if four of you end up in the same place and a public meeting hasn't been posted, stay away from each other. Like you don't wanna be accused of having a secret meeting in the dairy section of Hy-Vee if there were four of us shopping at the same time because you have to make all these decisions and conduct this business in public. But to Ms. Carter's point, there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes, picking up a phone and calling someone and saying, I wanna ask for this amount of money um, for the next facility spot, or I would like to address this or, um, discussing teacher pay or issues like that. Where we do not always see eye to eye, but we do our best to be expeditious behind the scenes while applying by the law, um, to, to be public in our intentions, but to not bring all that dirty laundry into the board meeting. We've had many discussions about all of these things before we come here. So, I think for a question like that, I was gonna also say, you're gonna look at this sheet and you're gonna leave and you're all gonna ask your teachers, why don't we run for this? I don't think there was any contention. It doesn't mean there's no contention, it just means we're here today. And it's always respectful.
It's always respectful, most of that was just if not on what, um, if public calls or even better, personal meetings. So, anyway, I just wanted to touch base on that so you, you understand how we resolve those things.
Those are great points. I wanna add just one little thing and that is that, um, even though there's are not being contention by any particular issue, you probably, as Westside students, know that in the past, um, there's been disagreement about things that the board has done or hasn't done. And, um, so the contention is not necessarily among ourselves. It might be between constituents that we have that are not happy about what they perceive to be happening and we hear from them, we definitely hear from them and respond to them. But that's just, that's government, we were a government. And the six of us are not here to create contention unnecessarily, but it's part of, it's part of government, you know, anytime you're not able to, you know, it's contentious to be part of our, of the life these days. But, um, as a government body, we do our best to come to consensus to make the best, best decisions we can. That's how government is supposed to work and it's not supposed to always be unanimous or rubber stamp, um, and it's not, and it's...
And some people can disagree respectfully, so... That's an important lesson. Okay, more policies for review, Nick. And here's a perfect example, we've seen these policies before in smaller meetings and pushed back on some of them, revisions were made, so...
Yes, good morning, everybody. Uh, if you look on your agenda, you'll see that I'm talking about two different policies today. One is a new policy that I'm proposing to the board. New policy that I'm proposing to the board, uh, the other policy... Hey, you wanna come use it? Would this microphone be better so we're not making that horrible sound? Yeah, here you go. And the other policy is, uh, our revisions to our existing policy on code of ethics for the board. So just to give you all a little bit of understanding of the structure of the district here, we have board members who are elected by the voters of District 66. They have overall supervision and control of the district. They hire Dr. Lucas as the superintendent, he's the CEO, so to speak. And he's responsible for putting people in place to run the district every day. The board members are not teachers, they don't teach classes, they don't take attendance, they're not principals, they don't, um, they don't enforce disciplinary policies or, you know, make sure the kids are where they need to be. That's Dr. or Mr. Aranda's responsibility. They don't write the curriculum, that's Dr. Weil's responsibility. But we all report up to the board. And that's because the board is allowed by law to delegate their running of the everyday parts of districts to employees like Dr. Lucas, like me, like Dr. Weil. And so, but there are certain things that the law says only the board can do. And one of those things is enacting policy. So what I'm proposing today is a new policy about relationship with district outside legal counsel and revisions to another, to an existing policy on the board code of ethics. Only the board can make these decisions. I can't make, I can propose it, but only they can say, yes, we will do it, no, we won't do it, or yes, we'll do it, but we need to see some changes. And that's because, that's what the law says. So for our first policy, uh, we have policy 1105, which is the guidelines for relationship of district outside legal counsel. So this is saying, I'm the in-house legal counsel for the school, which means I'm an employee of the district. I don't work for a law firm, uh, and that the district will contract with. I'm an actual employee of the district, just like Dr. Lucas, Dr. Weil, Mr. Aranda. So when we need outside legal help, we need some guidelines as to how that's going to work. And that's what I'm proposing with policy 1105. And like Ms. Carter has mentioned, um, they have seen this before and in the second to last paragraph, they asked that I add some language, which I've done. So board members, if you wanna look at the second to last paragraph in 1105, I added the "as provided above" language to clarify that if a board member contacts outside legal counsel within the guidelines of the policy, that's okay. If they reach outside that, that's when they'll be restricted. As requested by Ms. Carter.
And students, the reason for that is, that would be, we don't want the district to, one of us call up a lawyer and assign that lawyer an outside project and then get stuck in the middle with the rest of us that don't know about or didn't approve. Um, that's happened in other places, not here, but hiring lawyers can be expensive and then some, one of us decides, hey, I'm gonna hire so-and-so about this issue that I'm curious about, well, that's expensive, that's not for you. And you don't wanna be paying expense that we're not all willing to incur.
And we're paying that expense with taxpayer money, so we, we wanna be careful about it. So that is the, that's the proposed policy 1105. 1110, I'm proposing revisions to our existing policy, which is called the Code of Ethics. Uh, this is the code of ethics that the board previously put in place to govern their conduct, saying how they should act, to show up to meetings, be prepared, all that sort of thing. Um, but what I'm proposing is a, uh, enforcement provision. So this way, if a board member is not doing what they're supposed to do, the board has an officially sanctioned way to punish them, which in this case is a public censure so that everyone will be aware that a board member is not doing what they're supposed to do. And when reelection comes up, I'm sure that, you know, the voters can take that into account.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got a question about 1105, I guess I'm pretty curious what my colleagues think about, um, a small change to the very beginning of it, from the board will engage outside legal counsel to assist it to the board may engage outside legal counsel because that, not every time a legal issue arises, we'll be hiring outside counsel. We have due for a lot of that and so we don't wanna you to sell yourself for, uh, and, um... We don't do that very often or regularly, uh, but sometimes we need to, uh, as circumstances dictate. So perhaps May might reflect, um, a little better than the adults. Yeah, I can justify it.
I agree, since this is, yeah, since this is our, these are official rules of the district and they're public facing and we're house to them, I completely agree with you.
But thank you for this, it's good.
Of course.
We need this and it's gonna be good to have.
I guess the only other question I have is, uh, do we have or do we need a policy like this for any other outside vendors that we might use? Whether that be search firms, accounting firms, other professional firms, something like that, or, or because it's legal or, uh, a specific need or distinction for this particular policy?
I, I think with respect to accounting firms, because that happens in a defined time period, at the time we do our audit, the time, you know, all, all that sort of thing, that's pretty limited. But because the legal issues can arise, you know, six times in one week and then zero the next and it's just more of an as needed basis, I think it's probably more appropriate just for legal services, but if I'm missing something, I'm more than happy to be educated.
We probably have procurement policies in place for vendors and...
Yes, procurement policies, the chain of command and approval of expenses, all that sort of thing are in place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, could I say something before Dr. Shumans' personnel report? I'm looking at your questions right now and there's a question out there that says, did, um, what happened today impact your life and how? And I would say it's not always evident that decisions we're making will have direct impact on you, though they do. This personnel report that is gonna be offered to us is one of those examples. Um, teachers have been hired, teachers have announced their retirement. Like the changing of staff at the building would definitely impact your lives. I would go back to something that we discussed in, and held public forums on over the summer. We're all wearing masks today due to, um, Dr. Lucas and the board's decision to be guided by medicine and guided by science. Like those are things that will impact your life directly. But all of the decisions we're making and the things we're discussing around curriculum and, um, hiring teachers and approving, um, retirements and American Civics Committee, all of those things do either directly or indirectly impact you, so...
I'm not as correct about Ms. Blakely, because we have several new teachers that are off to form high schools, so...
Yeah, from their high school, okay.
I'm in July, assistant superintendent for Westside Community School, so welcome, and thank you all for being here. I do add comments, have a lengthy personnel report, because we are in the midst of completing our first phase of our hiring. So we do have, um, twelve new probationary contracts that we would like to have you approve today. We have one administrative resignation, two teacher resignations, uh, retirements, excuse me, and then seven future certified staff resignations. So I would be asking for approval of the board personnel report as presented.
Dr. Schumacher, before we vote, just maybe for the students' benefit, this sort of, as you mentioned, is sort of the beginning. Uh, the calendar is the beginning of the time where we're filling positions and making drop-off hiring calls, right? And that kind of runs through, um, it continues on for, we hire people as needed throughout the year, but the bullet that happens around this time of year that...
Yeah, absolutely. So we hire classified staff members all year round, people who help us in building services, facilities, nutrition services, various specialty A's, those kinds of folks. But our teachers, certified staff, and instructors are on a twelve-month contract. So, uh, December, we have early resignations that we fill, and then, um, on March fifteenth, they're required to turn in their letter of intent. So this will be really the, the completion of that first wave, and then we may have some backfills of some other positions. But, uh, we're through the bullet of it in this report. And you'll, you always see my bill, something I have that somebody just transferred or something, or some of it. This will be the, the bullet we're having for this season, so...
Yes.
We're, we're...
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have a need for approval of the personnel report as presented by the institution.
I have a motion, and is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Pritzer, Dr. Van Elder, Ms. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Gayle.
Yes.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board member representation updates.
I can go. Um, on March nineteenth, I, um, represented the Nebraska Association of School Boards in my role on the Nebraska Council for Teacher Education. We're continuing ongoing discussions about, uh, concerns over, uh, teacher retention, teacher hiring, um, teacher education in Nebraska at the College of University Systems. Um, we, in this most recent meeting, debated recommendations by Dr. David Steiner from Hopkins University. Uh, Dr. Steiner is trying to encourage Nebraska to consider things like longer student teaching experiences, paid student teaching, uh, among other things, um, the praxis requirements, um, the testing, things that may often, um, be stumbling blocks for people who want to get into teacher education. Uh, we make no official decisions on his recommendations in this last meeting. We'll be meeting again in June. Um, but I think, as always, it is very interesting to discuss, um, the quality of teacher education in Nebraska and what kind of requirements we put in place for people who wanna be teachers, so...
Great, thank you.
Uh, I was happy to attend the, uh, Prairie Lane ribbon pledge for the new school. Um, the Prairie Lane students, uh, as you heard earlier, have been at our swing school, um, the Old Valley View, um, and they are, uh, moving into, and we are opening up the Prairie Lane School, um, on one hundred and fourteenth, Southwood Center, um, back in there. And it's a great building, um, it's, about thirty percent of it is from the old building, and seventy percent of it is all new, uh, but it looks great. I think it fits in well with the neighborhood and the community. Um, it was great to see it, great to see the staff there. And, uh, our board co-resident, Chris Carr, gave some remarks, and other people did as well, including Dr. Lucas. It's a really nice building. It's the last of our four schools that were, uh, redoing with the bond money that owners approved. And, uh, that was a big day for, for the district, Prairie Lane especially. So, um, I'm gonna be attending a legislative lunch on Monday. Um, it's the NAST legislative update, I think that's what I did. Um, so you all know, you, you keep pretty close tabs on legislations going on or being proposed down in Lincoln at the state level, because that, um, talking about impacting your life, uh, some of us are busy really doing, um, in terms of financing, funding, uh, where we get the resources to, for the programming that we, um, that's offered here throughout the district. So we really try and pay close attention to that. Westside is really unique in a lot of respects in terms of, you know, we have a lot of option students, and, um, so we really have to pay attention to legislation, because it can affect us differently than other metro districts. So I'll get an update on Monday, I don't know if I have, but, uh, this is the busy time in terms of the legislature as a law. So update you all if you want that.
What else? Something I get a very, I can do, or you can actually add a... Okay. Let's say an update.
Um, you know, we got the last email from Sean Kelly, our lobbyist, so he continues to be a daily presence down there. There's a couple of bills we're monitoring, Senator Linehan's property tax bill, uh, is one that we are doing a lot of back-channeling on. Should have an update for you, maybe middle of next week. Uh, that's, that's the one that is... So we're able to come back soon.
And to, to Mr. Pritzer's point, we don't just monitor, um, in fact, he was down testifying in front of, uh, one of the committees earlier this year, um, on behalf of Westside. And so we spend a lot of time contacting legislators, asking community members to do that, and then also either writing, um, testimony to submit on behalf of the district or testifying personally. So it's an online process, and we regularly give updates on that. Okay, announcements. April thirteenth is the bond oversight committee meeting. I sent an email, I'll be there, I think you said you wanted to go as well?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Um, Board of Education student fees, public hearing in board meeting, six thirty at ABC on April nineteenth. No school on April twenty-third, so remember that. Um, and then May first, Westside on the Green at halftime passing, so that will be pretty much... There's anything for...
Some specifics on May first, we're really excited about that with our, uh, to celebrate our performing arts. So at twelve thirty, it'll be the choirs. At four o'clock, it'll be when the orchestra starts, and then at six thirty, we'll be bands. So, um, we're open for a great turnout there.
Thank you very much. Thanks for attending, guys, and we are adjourned.